You know that. Ready? Okay. All right. Five sixteen, let's call the workshop to order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwerer. Here. Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby is absent, and Mayor Monge.
Here. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwerer. Second, Councilmember Wong. All in favor, say aye.
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 First topic, tobacco ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Welcome back.
Hello.
Thank you. Um, do you want to introduce- am I introducing this? Or are you doing- oh, what are we doing?
Last- last time, um, we reviewed the tobacco ordinances, and, um, we were short a couple councilmembers, so, um, Katie has come back to, uh, bring some options to add to the ordinance or change, um, so we can move forward with it and bring it to the November seventeenth meeting to adopt the ordinance.
So, in the ordinance that we talked about last time, there's some federal and state updates, um, that would bring your local licensing or ordinance into compliance with those. Um, again, they set the minimum. And then there's three other pieces in that ordinance that we kind of are above and beyond, um, but are public health best practices. Number one was restricting the sale of flavored tobacco products. The second was capping your number of tobacco licenses that you want in your community. And the third was practice- Twenty-five percent of the state right now is covered in a flavor restriction, um, or those municipalities are covered. There was a map in your council packet, um, and a handful of your neighboring communities. This on flavoring, um, as you know, the state follows local municipalities. There is- was a bill in the legislature last session, and there will be another one, um, going forward this legislative session. But, a lot of people say, "You have great power here at the local level. Don't wait for the state or the federal government to take care of it, do it at the local level." So, the flavors, um, and that- and that can look a handful of variety of ways. Um, the next one is capping. So, how many licenses do you want to have in your community? Um, some people have done- some communities have done this through, based on population, based on just a number. Um, some Bloomington and Little Canada have put it at zero, so through attrition, um, you'll just slide through and you won't renew any tobacco licenses. Um, so the current ones would stay put, but then, as they leave or move, you just wouldn't renew them. And then the last one is proximity to youth-oriented facilities. Um, I- I- we heard also through, um, the cannabis presentation right after me, but that- that is not allowed to be sold within five hundred feet of schools, I think, or, um, daycares, parks, etc. So, it's kind of along those same lines of like, where do we want our tobacco shops? Or where do we want tobacco for sale in- in North St. Paul? Do we want it across the street from the high school? Probably not. But, we're not going to put anyone out of business, but where- as we go forward, where do we want these- these products available? So, those are kind of the three pieces that are above and beyond state and federal law, um, for discussion and for, uh-
Conversation.
Conversation, thank you.
Okay. So... This was discussed at the last one, I was the only one that wasn't there.
Uh, Jason wasn't either.
Jason wasn't either, they're preferred. All right.
But they can't- they brought samples, so we saw what they all look like. Yep. We saw what the different- the loon and some of the different, uh, products look like, and... Or just some of the other ones, seems to be a lot more.
Okay.
Marketing aspect. Feeling it can be, and the names of flavors. Just a little bit about that.
The brochure you- or handout you gave us is Quick Trip and, uh, Holiday. Of course, that other one that's right across the parking lots, next to Holiday, so that'd fall within the same circumference then, right?
Right.
Is that all we have for?
We have seven.
Seven, is it?
Tobacco, uh, nicotine holders.
These are just the two examples, you show it, just okay.
One, Quick Trip, Nicky's, and then the tobacco. Who's the other? There's- or wait, there's four.
One over on Eleventh. Two Hol- two Holidays.
Yeah.
A Quick Trip.
Quick Trip, Nicky's, which is next door. Um, that's regular tobacco, or by Polar Nutrition. Five. Target doesn't sell it.
Why is there that many?
So...
So, it's seven per about where? Is that what we're looking at?
I had a thirteen.
Does the discussion move on?
Okay. Whatever the new consensus is.
Thank you. What was that number?
It's just twelve thousand.
Rain man over here.
Twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-four.
I got that number down.
North St. Paul, Tobacco, Nicky's, Polar Lounge, Division Street.
Polar Lounge?
Interesting.
Sales, Division Street, Quick Trip, Holiday, two Holiday stations.
Division Street.
Didn't realize bars could-
Fuel, fuel.
So, they- the bars, um, can still sell tobacco products.
Oh, I see.
Um, we saw them kind of decrease after cleaning their air because they were selling it as convenient. Um, but now that bars are so free, we've kind of just seen them. But they hold- still hold the license.
Hmm, interesting. All right, so, obviously you guys discussed.
They did, really. They- they thought we were going to wait for you.
Yeah, we-
Twenty-five percent, give me that, it was- are covered. I just worked on it.
My math out.
Twenty-five percent of the population.
Twenty-five point eight seven percent Minnesotans are covered by flavored tobacco policies.
Okay.
So, um, hello, welcome.
Sorry, graphic sucked.
You voted in favor of everything while you were going.
Sounds great.
Nice job, welcome.
I agree with everything Keith said.
Oh, wow.
Um, so, I don't- I have- this is what it looked like in your packet.
Yep.
Um, so about twenty- little over twenty-five percent of Minnesotans are covered by a flavored tobacco policy. Some of them look- their policies look a little different as they have evolved through adoption, and, you know, ten years ago, the first policies were- were kind of cutting edge. And now, we know what best practices are, we know what works, and they're not so cutting edge anymore, and they're pretty comprehensive. So, um, yes, the variety of them is in the metro.
Mhm.
Um, but there is greater Minnesota as well included in that.
Our neighbors, Maplewood surrounded, what are they?
Maplewood. Um, we had actually students address, tried to bring it up, um, North St. Paul. North High School students met with Maplewood Mayor, and she was not interested in, um, doing anything.
Just curious, three sides of them, so, that's their- they're our closest.
And Maplewood is surrounded by Roseville, which has it, St. Paul, um, I'm just looking at my list here, um, a handful of other communities, so.
Yeah, Little Canada.
Little Canada does not have flavor restrictions, but they have capping. So, they've set their cap at zero.
Maplewood.
They didn't want to- their- Little Canada originally concerned about enforcement, um, because they contracted the Sheriff's Department to do all their enforcement checks. And to be honest, enforcement of this has not been a problem at all. We did a survey in Ramsey County this summer of communities that have flavor restrictions and don't. And of those that have flavor restrictions, almost all of them were following. And they would just point to the city, "Sorry, we can't sell this." There was some confusion with some, um, synthetic nicotine products about if they could be sold or not, but again, that's just education, and- but they were mostly following.
I think seven is a lot. Sounds disagreeing.
The population.
Um, I also think that in conversation with the budget, we were exercising the fact, um, and I brought it up, so I'd be happy to- sensibility and accountability for that, at, uh, talking about a dispensary in the city as well. So, if we're going to exercise flavors and getting rid of those in 2025, when that becomes something, you- there are flavors of that. So, that's something to be considered, and if we're looking at that being a tax saving to our, uh, community by bringing in a dispensary, then we're going to redo the ordinance, or they're not- it's not welcomed, so.
Your flavor cannabis is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, I get it, okay.
So, I think that would be the cannabis policy, which-
It is different?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're separate.
Yep.
Separate policies. Um, I think this was something that we talked a little bit about, and it was in your presentation. Um, the amount of targeting, um, of youth is- Um, so when I'm even looking at this map, um, five hundred and a thousand feet, um, you know, it's- I think it's going to be, I'll just say it'll- it'll have to be striking a balance, but I do think that seven retail for twelve thousand five hundred, that way, and then the cannabis rule of thumb is twelve thousand. How far?
Right.
Yeah, how far do we want to go? And at who- at the cost of who?
Well, and the- the other important factor is that we have to keep in mind are what current businesses are in place, established, and have been here for a while. We don't want to put them out of business.
Right, and that's what I said, attrition is-
So that's- was it- who's got a cap of zero?
Well, in Bloomington.
Okay, so, what we talked about last meeting was, we can put a cap on.
Right.
Which doesn't mean we shut anybody down, but as they go away-
Right.
We don't replace them. The city doesn't grant additional licensing.
Okay.
That was- that's the- that was the cap conversation.
That's the attrition conversation, and then the cap is? Three or four, whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Well, they- they tie together. If you set a cap at three, and we've got seven.
You gotta work your way down.
So you work your way- you work your way down.
Sure.
Only when they choose to- city's not pushing anybody. It's when they choose to no longer do business.
Profitable enough.
Yeah.
See, we're done with it.
Did I get that right?
You got it.
Thank you. So, you're looking for guidance in one, two, three, four areas? Is that what I'm understanding, to move forward to council with?
I think we said three, but so if you- okay, so number one.
I have four.
What do you- okay, what do you got?
So, I have adopt- basically make our statute the same as- to tie in with fed and state.
Correct, yeah, identical, yeah.
For the two that weren't here, our law still says we can sell to eighteen-year-olds.
Right.
So...
Oh.
Um, so we need to get ourselves aligned with, um, the state and- the- the state and federal laws. So, I'm of su- clearly in support of that, of- of that, moving that one checkbox forward. Are you looking for a consensus, Kenny?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I can- that was- that to me was kind of the no-brainer. So, I wanted to move the easy one up.
Thank you.
Now it's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Now we're down to three.
Okay.
So then I still have flavor, I have cap, um, capping, and I have proximity to school. Those are the three that I still have left.
Yep, yep, you got it.
All right, I'm done.
Flavors.
My job's done.
What- what's the next easiest on your- on your list?
I don't know. Whatever, I mean, we've- we've kind of danced around a bunch of them. Do we want to just focus on a topic?
Mm-hmm. I think we should pick one.
You pick.
Well-
Go ahead, Mayor, you pick.
Let's pick, um, a cap.
Cap.
I would pick youth.
We'll get to it. Wow.
Let's talk about capping, seven is awfully high.
Do we have- did you share statistics, and I apologize if you did last time and I didn't retain it, is there a per capita average out there somewhere? Um, you know, you pulled out seven per twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-four residents?
Yeah.
I think a big part of it, like she said too, was poorer neighborhoods have a lot more than other neighborhoods.
Right.
They really focus on low income.
Low income, yeah, absolutely, and-
So they have a lot more.
Yep.
So that's what I'm trying to throw out, do we have too many? Do we- I mean, per capita, do we have too many? Do we not have enough? Where- where's our baseline where we start?
I know, I have this document, um, ah, I sent it to- and the chief. Ooh, can anyone call the chief? They- they have it in their email.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
I think you guys are kind of in the middle. Compared to Maplewood, and New Brighton are really high.
Okay. That was all I was looking for.
Their population's a lot higher.
Right, correct.
But per capita, they are very, very high.
Okay. That was- that was- I don't think I need- I didn't need an exact number unless others do. I was just looking for, where are we on the- on the spectrum?
My concern is putting people out of business. Um, I- I believe that the seven that we have, the two that are with Polar Lounge and the, um, Legion, which is the Division Street, correct? Um-
The one right next to Legion, that's the gas station.
The gas station.
Arco.
Oh, oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, I said right- right next to, yeah.
I spaced that one out.
Yeah, like, it comes and goes, it's open and it closes, it opens and it closes, so.
Right.
We're open right now, I guess.
It's been good so far.
So, so we're not so, just, for what I'm hearing, we just stay at seven. We just say, "We can't- we're not allowing anybody new to come in and get a new tobacco license if we- if we cap it at seven."
Correct. If you left it at seven, no one new would be able to come in and get a new license.
I'm just- But if someone chose to go out at a cap of seven, another tobacco company could- another tobacco seller could come in.
Correct.
Because we would be-
Yeah, then we would- then we'd figure out the- the- how many we want to have as a sweet spot.
Right.
Yeah. So, right now, we can't add anymore, but if we subtract, do we-
Right now, there's nothing holding us from adding anymore. Too, we don't have a cap.
Exactly, right now, they could come in.
Okay.
Anybody could open it up.
In- in the 2040 plan, a- and I'm specifically thinking of the target Quick Trip area, um, what is that slated for long-term goals? And would a cap- would a cap hurt development there? I'm thinking like if a Loves or a Buc-E's or, uh, wanted to get in that area to compete with the Quick Trip, um, for- for- to be in line with our 2040 goals, am I remembering correctly that that's slightly slated for more of- of that type of business?
Business looking at, no. Business going into where you'll not set.
Per capita. Thank you.
What you were saying, like, if there's another gas station supermarket that went on the other side of the corner, then they would be-
Well, I- I think it's a- I- I don't believe any of the big names will- would even consider going into that area i- i- if, uh, tobacco license is off the table. Um, the- the- the previous history, like, the Holidays and stuff, now my information's a little bit old, probably about seven years dated, i- i- if they had a- a list of checkboxes, a- and tobacco being one of them, if that wasn't available, they would not look at that area. So, a cap does potentially, um, narrow down the pool of the people that might look at certain areas of our city, right, wrong, or indifferent. Um, so just something to be aware of.
I guess like, when we talk about buffers in that area, the city, um, it's really close to the high school, and that's where I- got that buffer, in particularly.
Well, a- a- and I was even thinking, not in this- well, I suppose, yeah, that would be the spot, but also it could have potential impact when the thirty-six, one-twenty interchange goes down. If- if a big- a big name gas station wanted to go in there, n- not having the cap of a tobacco could potentially put us off the market.
We could get a business like CVS that's dedicated to-
Right. Oh, a- and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just-
Yeah.
-think it needs to be something we're aware of.
Hmm, totally, yeah.
Because the- the field, McKnight Field is considered one of those zones, you can't do it, so it would be pretty much right across the street from any development there, that McKnight Field would be.
Can I ask, youth-oriented, was that- was there an age range that was focused on? Or does that include daycares and things? That was a part of the cannabis bill, but, uh, just-
Youth-oriented facility, Mayor, council. Um, any facility with residents, customers, visitors, or inhabitants, which- of which twenty-five percent or more are regularly under the age of twenty-one, or that primarily sells, rents, or offers services or other pro- products that are consumed or used primarily by persons under the age of twenty-one. Includes inv- includes, but is not limited to, schools, playgrounds, recreations, and all- and parks.
We've got other schools thrown in there, we've got that school right off of Second, that borough, or down that corner, there's a school on that one, we got a school across the street through here, so, I mean, we've got quite a few schools. Art, lot of parks, too.
We can look at the per capita, but then what's the per capita over twenty-one?
We'll take here on the corner of Eleventh and Quick Trip right next to Parkside. There's a certain distance, I know that, uh, the city manager gave us one, a thousand five hundred. Is there certain ones that, uh, different places use, is there a-
It's in between, I think you're right on track, between five hundred to a thousand. Um, I think, I also, we have to acknowledge that we're, um, in a community that's pretty developed already, um, compared to someplace else. And so, acknowledging where we're at and saying, "Okay, this is what we have." I mean, we're not going to- we don't want to put anyone out of business, but we also, how do- going forward, what do we want this to look like?
At that point, wasn't that just capping it?
It's-
Because all the businesses that are surrounding it are near educational. So, when you have Holiday, that's-
We have a list of where, which parks are the same thing, right? Park on every corner.
So, have we moved off of caps and onto proximity?
Yep.
Did we decide what we're going to do on caps?
Nope.
Okay.
I think we should cap it at six, because that's, I mean, we'll- we'll be putting people out of business.
Well, seven is one cap right now.
No, we won't.
You won't put a single person out of business.
No, but we should cap at six.
Nobody goes out of business. It just means that there's six licenses.
Right, sorry, they're not going out of business, yes. They would- they would no longer have their license, um, so.
They would still have their license.
They would just add as usual until they decide they're not going to sell it anymore, they can't say, "We're going to give up our license, and somebody else is going to get it, it's just going to be-"
Ah, okay, never mind.
Yeah. But stays put, we just don't add anymore in.
Mm-hmm.
We have to figure out when they go, what's the number if we go down that path.
Any consensus on cap or no cap? Depending on what the outcome of that is, then we can move to a number or a non-number. So, I am- I am- I would be in favor of consensus of a cap.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. I as well.
I am not.
I'll do- I'm for a cap.
Again, as a reminder, this is not a vote, this is just a consensus, and that we're only trying to give staff direction.
Exactly, yep.
So... So, the second part is-
I'd say cap it at-
Pick a number, I mean-
I'd cap it at seven. I mean, because we don't know when, well, the city would know when a license is done, um.
Right.
Do you need an- you- we need a number for a cap?
Yeah.
Okay.
You do need to insert into your language.
It's easy cap.
I'd say- I'd say seven, because that's what we currently have.
Or in the middle, four.
I'm looking at Jason. Well, I mean, be- because of my earlier statement, allowing for growth, I would cap it at one more than we currently have, cap it at eight.
I'm fine with five to seven. I don't- I'm somewhere in that vicinity. But you need an exact-
Seven.
Seven. So.
Looks like seven and a-
Seven and a-
Seven.
Um... A license is transferable with the sale of the business, correct? And it automatically transfers?
You guys could decide that as well?
Okay, thank you.
Do you want it to be transferable? I can give you, in Bloomington, they- they really struggled with this. They have it transferable to one family member, and only one time. But it- then the city has to determine what is a family member. So then it got messy, um.
That's something we need as a direction on tonight? We have the five items now on my list?
Oh, my gosh. Well, do you- you know, let's just say, like, okay, you're going to cap it at seven, right? Do you want it to be transferable?
I- I look at licenses or not.
Well-
Give me a reason why you would transfer it, I guess.
Well, you're selling it, and all of a sudden you're saying you're buying the store, but by the way, you can't have cigarette- you can't have tobacco anymore because, "No, it's only with me," so then that person loses maybe some revenue coming in.
Or if it's not transferable, I leave the gas station in John's name, and I pseudo-run it as a general manager for the next ten years because I can't transfer it of his name because I can't get the license. Um, and- and that's what used to happen when there was a cap on the liquor license in some of the areas, i- is people found a way to get around that. A- a- and that's where my mind is going is-
Sure.
You know, no more liquor licenses, but John has one, so, no, John stays it, even though he doesn't want the business, I run it for him.
Yeah.
And I'm paying him-
I wasn't processing that properly.
Okay. And then the opposite of that is what St. Paul's dealt with, is that they try to take the license away from bad actors.
Mm-hmm.
And they find someone to transfer it to, and it's the same bad actor that continues to take the community down. Cousin or a friend, or whatever.
For me, just in reference of time and keeping everything, I'm in favor of, what do I word this? Um, not, oh, what's- I want the city to be able to have, for that exact reason, I want the city to be able to have a say. Doesn't mean that they can't sell the business and the license, they just need to apply for the license before the sale.
I think that works, because you still have your cap at seven. It's not like you have a cap at zero.
Right.
Hmm.
So-
Yeah, because we don't want to take a- we can decide if it's going to be-
Mm-huh.
-granted properly, if it's-
Yep.
Options.
Kind of the same thing we do with liquor licenses, if somebody's coming in and want to know what they're looking to do before-
Yep.
-we grant the liquor license, that was kind of the direction that I took when I thought through this.
Hmm.
So, transferable upon council decision?
Mm-huh.
Mm-huh. So. Yeah, I- it's fair, because it doesn't hamstring them.
Mm-huh.
If they find somebody good, we're not taking away some of their business.
I got it, okay.
Proximity, feet-wise. That's why I asked you to give the five and the twelve.
And remember, these are new licenses, for movement.
Correct.
You're not putting anyone out of business with us.
Do we have any? Hard way from having, how do we do it?
I don't think we have anything.
Just pretty much where anybody is right now, they wouldn't be there if it was applying new.
And if the cap goes in place, the only way this would be in effect is if someone voluntarily got rid of their license and someone new wanted a new location, right?
Now, if they do that, now we have to figure out what yardage is, the feet between, is it a thousand or five hundred?
That makes me think, it's like, how far are they traveling or moving? Are they? Good, or are they, you know? Be helpful if I had a little bit more information. The four here. Oh, two. And then, um, also highlighting, as I use, Rancity Facility because my understanding is this is new. So, if we have a general idea where they are, then. So, we were talking about the daycare facility on Eleventh, and then there's that twenty-four hour, and then the world, or would this affect in-home daycare facilities? Have to be licensed by.
Is twenty-five percent of their, I'll go back to the definition. Is twenty-five percent of the population under twenty-one, yes? Um, yes, they probably would. Proximity, license would have granted, I'm just reading the definition, too. I go back, all these great attorney definitions.
And our fire department, who's like, has a daycare and.
Yeah.
I mean, things can differ, 'cause if they're licensed, and. You put a cap on it, and we don't know where that licensed daycare is unless we pull the data. That's provided by the state. So ideally, a cap sounds nice, but you're gonna have to contact state to figure out where have you been home daycare facilities are. So, under age.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep. But this only goes into effect the buffer if it's new.
If it's new, correct.
So, right now, we've got seven, we're not, we didn't do any more than seven. Somebody has to relinquish theirs or move, so. Then it becomes this stage after we're done to see where it is.
Right. And that's just something that, as a city, we're gonna have to keep in mind before granting it.
Yep.
Um, I mean, beyond the policy. I would think staff is going. It would be.
Perco Holiday has two parks, and if you call Veterans Park, school right across the street, and this other school. So, to me, it's not much difference between five hundred and a thousand. You have so many different schools and parks and everything else.
You're screwed. So, I guess, to, again, to break it down and keep things moving, break it down and fix the question. You know, what's, what's the, what's the opinion towards putting a buffered zone or a proximity up? Be the first one, and then depending on where we align, I guess, would be, um, is there a, is there feet?
Everybody want a buffer?
I like it if it can be post-dated. If someone bought a house yesterday with the intent of putting in a daycare and did all their rules and research, I don't wanna necessarily pull the rug out from under them on something that they might have worked a long time for. So, if we could post-it and say, this goes into effect a year from now or something like that. So, anyone looking to start a new business would have enough time to do the right research.
I like that, and plus, we're keeping it at seven, so it's not like people are gonna make the rush to open up a tobacco place 'cause we can't, 'cause we're keeping it at seven.
Well, I was thinking more of the, more of the daycare.
No, I'm just saying, but on the other way, they're not rushing to get one, too, because we're not adding more licenses. So, we're keeping that the way it is. But yes, if somebody started something and, you know, had just happened to be across from, from where they're, from where they're selling it.
It's an interesting way to look at it. So, if I interpret you correctly, you're looking at someone who wants to open up a daycare that's within the buffer.
Right.
As opposed to the flip-flop.
Yeah, you know, someone could have bought a house that's four hundred feet away from there, they're, you know, going through all the motions, you know, usually buying.
But, but isn't that buffer even come into play? Because there's nothing new, so the buffer really doesn't come into play.
But the daycare would be new.
But that's just for the, not just for the, um, shops themselves?
My understanding was I could not open up a in-home daycare within that buffer, once we.
If we had a new license.
No, it's under the license section. And it says, no license will be granted to any persons or retail establishments that is within a thousand feet of a youth-oriented facility. I actually don't.
But that's the license of tobacco. It's nothing to do with somebody popping up next to there. I don't think that.
Okay, I was misunderstanding that, that you couldn't get a new daycare license within the buffer as well.
I think that's a good clarification.
It is good.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
After a full day work and a commute, you're doing really good.
Then I like the buffer.
Yeah, time to think in the car.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't affect the daycare.
It's all about the tobacco license.
Okay, so, with tobacco, then I'm, then I think we'd be fine. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with the buffer.
So, offer everybody, thousand, five hundred? I'm thinking five hundred. Okay.
Seven fifty.
There you go. I like you splitting.
Seven fifty-one, lady?
Prices minus. You guys got the consensus, so I'm, I'm not a supporter.
No, we don't.
Oh, you're not for the buffer?
No, I'm not for a buffer.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I like the idea of buffer. I don't really have a preference, as long as it, as long as that buffer doesn't affect the daycare side of it, if it's five hundred or a thousand. Seven fifty does split the difference, but.
You can put seven fifty in, we can just insert it. All we have to do is change it.
I just tried to be funny, yeah.
Okay, her and I, so it has to be.
Again, I don't, I don't have, I, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion either way. That's why I split the difference between the two, yeah?
Seven fifty, right or no?
Yeah, I, I don't have a strong opinion as far as the size of the buffer.
Okay, seven fifty, well, insert it.
Yep, okay.
Flavor.
Flavor.
And I'm making checkmarks on my sheet.
Yep.
So, what this would do is, would restrict or end the sale of flavored tobacco products. Um, you have seven licenses. Two tobacco stores.
Tobacco stores, yeah.
Two tobacco stores. The tobacco store definition is ninety percent of the revenue has to come from tobacco products. That I might. So, some communities have, oh, I, okay, going forward, everyone is included menthol. Menthol is absolutely included, wintergreen mint. There's historic targeting, as we talked about last time, with those products. They should be included. So, that's what we're talking about with, we say flavors. Some communities have put the, all of those flavored products in a tobacco shop with the intention that young people and families aren't going in there. And so it's less access and appeal, like we talked about last week. Other communities have just said, no flavored products. And all of those options are available in Ramsey County. So, everyone did something a little different.
But that's, if they're selling it now, they sell it now.
Correct.
Okay, so that's not changed.
Well, no, 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 no. If they're selling flavored product right now, they would have a year to remove those products off the shelf.
That's the one different that we're doing, we're talking about, I just wanna be clear. So, this one, now we're changing what they can do for business. The other ones is new, and all that, okay.
Correct. So, in Roseville, when they voted, they gave them, I think, a year and a half almost, to say, in the next year and a half, you have plenty of time to notify your wholesaler, et cetera, to remove these products. And therefore, they capped their tobacco shops at four. So, their, their current four are selling flavored products.
So therefore, we would cap our tobacco shop?
You could.
Okay.
Or say that only flavored products are available at tobacco stores. Only, no flavored tobacco. To be honest, the easiest way to enforce it is to just declare across the board. But I wish Officer Mal was here with me. She got me into this.
So, you threw a statistic out there that I'm left scratching my head on. Who enforces the ninety percent rule?
The state.
They audit?
They should, and complaints have been issued, and they have a shutdown plan.
Interesting, okay, I'm just curious.
Can you say, as a city, no flavored products through attrition? Like, when the license transfers to a new owner, the new owner would not be granted flavored products? But we're grandfathering in ones that currently have it?
You could. That's looking really ungame, yeah.
For, for me, without a lot of, at least talking to the people that currently sell it, I think that would be as much as I could vote for, without knowing how much they believe it's gonna affect them of the, of the seven that sell it. I'm not saying I'd vote one or other, but I, I would wanna have a conversation with them before I'd vote more than ju- just having it be attrition when the license transfers.
Has anybody reached out from any of the stores? Has this been, be notified as far as the newsletters that we're talking about this subject, or, right?
Don't really know the changes.
I know we don't know the changes, but we know we're talking about it. So, then they would understand, otherwise, people can't come in and talk about it if they don't know we're talking about it.
So, there is a requirement of a thirty-day notice before any public hearing or vote. And so, putting this into November allows for all of that thirty, thirty-day-plus notice, absolutely.
That's all I'm sure, it's just for, you know, right now.
I don't want you to get in trouble, no.
Right now, you're here, that's great.
No, 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 I, no, I want you to follow.
Exactly, I don't wanna be shutting people out of this conversation if they don't know what's happening.
I think that if you want a flavored tobacco, you're gonna go to Maplewood, Oakdale, White Bear Lake, if any of those places have it. You're taking the business from our city and moving it to other cities to get flavored tobacco. So, I'm not in favor of messing with anybody's. It would be if it impacts our youth, and they're being targeted, like, very explicitly, very clear. You look at the Minnesota Student Survey this year, you'll see a huge decline in, like, traditional cigarettes, but a huge uptick of vape pens and all of that. That is something they're really, really using quite often. I'm, I'm looking at it from that lens.
Do you believe there's going to be a state mandate soon? Um, where is, it's taken out of all the city hands, cities' hands and the state? It takes the flavored products away from the entire state? That, that's, my assumption is coming. And that's kind of why I'm, I'm of the camp that we slightly wait for the state to do it. My, my, my guess is twenty-five or twenty-six, that, that it's coming from the state. That, I mean, and that's my uneducated guess, just from reading and talking to people.
Boy, it makes it even more, they want them more, so that's another thing, too. It becomes this whole.
And for me, up until this piece of it, we haven't impacted a business in town.
Correct.
I don't necessarily know if I have enough information to determine. Okay, so, while I'm not in favor of flavor, I'll sta- I'll state that, I don't think I have enough information to make that decision that would impact somebody else. So, I guess I would make one of two recommendations. We table that piece of it, go forward with everything we have, have a larger conversation later. Or, to your point, I'm also of the belief that, within the next couple of years, the state will probably come out and do something. So, up, up until now, we haven't impacted anybody's livelihood.
Correct.
So, and until I have the opportunity to have somebody come in and say, how much revenue would they be losing? Well, how does this impact? Recognizing the whole targeting thing, 'cause, again, not, not in favor of flavor, but let's, I, I don't know if I can make that decision for, for somebody who's had a business.
That's why I asked if there's a spot where people can.
Hold off on that, then?
You're charged. Friends are charged.
So, when it comes to council, it'll have everything that we discussed, and the flavor piece will not be addressed. That, that was a question, I'm sorry, it's not a statement. Okay.
Pull it out? Yep.
I have one thing that was not addressed on the checklist that I would like to just bring up, and we don't have to do it now. But after reading the copy that was, the attorneys provided input, I was looking at the changes in which we discussed what violations and fines. So, we increased it from three hundred to five hundred on the first offense. Five hundred to a thousand. And the third offense, I think, is, and licenses are completely revoked. Which that's in there. There's also, I think, from my perspective, if I were looking at a five hundred and then a thousand, and then having no license at all, that's a, a large jump in terms, seems almost punitive, or not punitive. Yeah, it just seems, whereas, I think some places are doing thirty-day suspension. What is the economic impact? We, we gonna revoke those licenses on the third time? Or are we looking at a seven-days revenue?
Are you thinking of adding a small time to the second one? Or adding a, a smaller time to the third and adding a fourth?
There isn't any, I saw, on the second one, and so there's.
Right, I just didn't know which way you were feeling.
So, yeah, I think that to completely revoke the licenses, based off of that trajectory, is, is, um, sketch. And I would be a little bit more comfortable at looking at what the economic impact for seven days versus.
Okay, and then adding a permanent, like, on the fourth, or adding a?
Yeah, I think on the notes, it said, some places are revoking on the fourth one.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I like that.
Wouldn't you, Mayor, help numbers? So, if you, I have the language in front of me. So, it was originally at two hundred for the first violation. And then it got bumped up to three hundred, 'cause that mirrors state law. And then the chief had asked for the five hundred to go in there.
Got it.
So, and then for the first violation. So, do you wanna go back to the three hundred? Leave it at five hundred for the first violation? Okay, that's fine. So then, for the second violation, it was state, it was at four hundred, state law says now says six hundred, and then, chief asked for a thousand dollars for the second offense at the same location within thirty-six month period. Plus, it's a thousand dollars plus a three day suspension of the license. And then, the third violation went from five hundred to a thousand with a ten day suspension. I, I sometimes need to draw, like, literally draw.
So both of them are a thousand, second and third?
Yep.
Okay. But it, but it's just a longer...
A violation, and the state law does require, um, uh, the state law does require a revocation. Within, um, within thirty-six months, a thirty day suspension.
Which offense is that?
The third.
Third, okay, that's kind of what we... So a thousand, thirty days, second is a thousand, seven days.
Three.
Three days, okay, thousand, thirty days.
So, yep. And the third would be a thousand dollars and a ten day suspension of license.
It would be helpful for me in the next say that out in, like, the visual format, I think I would be able to follow it. And then, just, we can easily compare.
And knowing whether subsequent violations reset the clock or not, would also be helpful.
After thirty-six months, it gets reset.
From the first one?
Yes, everything is within a thirty-six month, is a, is a window.
So if they had two in twelve months, first one would fall off, the second one would live, until it's thirty-six months came up.
So if I get my third violation, thirty-five months after the first one, my license is suspended for ten days, I serve my ten day suspension, a month goes by, and I do it again, am I getting another third?
Your first would, yes, because your first would fall off.
Yeah, if your first one falls, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so lay that up.
Yep, please.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Great discussion.
Well, thank you, appreciate your information.
Dan doesn't get his done. Dan can do it, I know he can. And I'm only aware of one business that we've ever had any struggles with in the city, and it's, it's been talked to twice. I don't know if that was in thirty-six months or not, but, but it's not, it's, like, the majority of the businesses are fine.
Yep, it's always the one percent that threw it up for everybody.
Give you one for the next meeting?
I want to review all of this, then, with charts and...
I can do the charts, so, uh, that's all I think, if you had a whiteboard right here, I'd be all over.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you for your great public...
Well, thank you. All right, Dan. And, uh, I didn't say at the beginning, but, uh, we're still having audio issues, so we have, uh, uh, we're sitting at the tables with, uh, with a Cisco, uh, Polycom phone, so, just to let you know, just in case, uh, people are still having audio issues, we're still working on it, so, hopefully it's good.
Hi. Hey, sir, how are you?
Good.
All right, we got a little less than twenty minutes, so I can't do all the talking, because we'd be here way too long. So, I frame this as the big picture, and here's the, here's the reason why I frame this as, uh, the big picture, is that, um, it's not just good enough to just look at what our current year budget is, it's not just good enough to look at what our financial statement is. Just a quick hypothetical. Call my wife up and say, "Hey, how much money do I have in the savings account?" She says, "Oh, you got, uh, ten thousand dollars." And I say, "Are we in good financial position?" And she says, "Yes, we are." And I said, "Hey, guess what? Uh, we need a new furnace and an air conditioner, and I think we probably got about a year, year and a half, and we're going to have to replace it." Ooh, jeez, there's ten thousand dollars. And then, I say, "Hey, you know, the roof is going, and there's probably another sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars for the roof." So, where was that in my expenditures? Where, where have I got that laid out someplace?
Sounds like my house.
That, that's the capital planning component to it. And then, the other component that we need to look at is that we need to look at, okay, wh- what are, what's my annual income? Um, what are my annual expenditures? And that's the budget, and then, we make assumptions, uh, based upon that and try to escalate that. And so, today, we're just going to kind of look at, um, we're not going to be able to get through everything, um, today, but, we're going to look at a financial plan overview, assumptions in the financial plans, reviews of the strategies in developing the financial plans, unknowns and future considerations, and then, some discussion and questions, and we really do need to get to the discussion and questions, because it's going to have an impact of how we want to end up handling the CIP. Uh, because the CIP, like I said from the very beginning, is a huge driver in your financial plan, in your outlook, in what you want to do for your priorities, your goals for the city, and, and, once you make those decisions, we lay that into, with where we're at with the budget, with, you know, looking at what our, our current funding is available, and then, project out, you know, what we're going to need for additional funding. That's where you're going to end up seeing where we had to, you know, our suggestion and recommendation, which you've adopted at this point in time in the preliminary budget, is to increase, say, two percent for streets and a one percent split between, um, parks and facilities. And so, it's just kind of a, it's a simple equation. If you're going to see on the financial plans that there's a December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two cash and fund balances, and yes, if I take that financial statement out, I've said it, and, and, and hopefully, for all the years that I'm here, I can present after the editors are done and say, "Hey, we're in good financial position." But to maintain our good financial position means that we need to do planning. And we need to estimate our future revenues and operating expenses based upon assumptions. Assumptions may be wrong, I'm not going to defend each and every one of them, they're going to change, and it's a, it's a living document, if we outperform one year versus the next, the plan gets adjusted, maybe we won't have to have rate increases in a year and so forth. And then, you need to, the big key part to it is, you need to have the capital outlay expenditures that's identified in the CIP, is what we're using today. And so, I am going to, so I don't do all the talking, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Kay, because she's much quicker than I am, either that it will be here till midnight. So, um, and Mary Kay has done a heck of a lot of, of work, um, with me on developing these financial plans, so I kind of want to give her some opportunity to speak, um, and, uh, so, Mary Kay?
Um, do you want to quote the water?
She is going to actually take you through, there was financial plans that were, um, added. She's going to take you through one of them and kind of identify everything in one...
Yeah, so just as an example, I thought we'd look at the water fund, because it has a lot of the, a little bit of everything, basically. So it'd be a good example to go through, so then, you can just look through the rest when you have more time. So, once we have that up...
Yeah, page forty, yes.
Oh, because I was...
It is number forty-seven, um, in your worksheet, in your, uh... Yes.
Okay, and so, what this financial plan does, is it kind of gives a history of what has happened over the last few years, and then, from twenty twenty-two, we figure out where we think we're going to end up in twenty thirty-three, over the next ten years. So basically, we start with the expenses, which are about in the middle of the plan. And so, we are assuming that the expenses will increase four percent between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty-three, and that four percent applies to the personnel, supplies, and contractual services. And that four percent is a pretty standard increase across all of the different funds. Um, and then, you will see the capital line, and here is where the variation is from year to year. So, for instance, in twenty twenty-three, you can see the budget for this year is two hundred thirteen thousand, and it jumps around, and if you look at twenty twenty-eight, it's all the way to four point eight million, which includes the water tower that year. And so, that line is really why we're doing this, is because we're going to have these huge things and expenses, and we need to figure out where we're sitting cash-wise and fund balance-wise, and see how we could afford it. Um, and then, there's also debt in this fund, and so, there's interest payments. And the water fund has also traditionally transferred out about two hundred five thousand to the general fund for maintenance. And so, those are all the expenses that are going into the water fund over the next ten years. Um, any questions on that part of it? I know I went pretty quick. Okay.
Thank you.
So then, the question is, how can the city afford these huge expenses, particularly the capital? And so, it's been funded by three different ways, and so, if you look on top, you can see we're increasing the rates by four point five to four point seven five percent in this fund over the next ten years. And then, so that's the first way that we're paying for these. And then, if you look down towards the bottom, there's the cash flow section. And in the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-nine, there's a line for bonds issued, and those years, we would actually recommend issuing debt, and those are for the major street reconstruction projects. All the other capital would be paid for with the cash on hand. And then, the third way we would pay for the capital in this fund is if you look at the twenty twenty-two column, and there's the cash at the end of the year, which is seven point five million. And if we go back up to the expense line for the year, you can see the total expenses for the year is one point four million. So basically, there's over four years of cash sitting in this fund. And so, what this plan does is it also uses up the available cash. And so, if you look at the cash at the end of the year, you can see it dropped significantly in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. So basically, that is paying for the new water tower, if that gets approved by council. And so, I know that was really quick, but that's kind of what we're trying to do here, is looking at the expenses, what departments are requesting in the CIP, and to figure out, like, how the city could afford it over the next ten years. And at the very bottom, or, if we go back to the cash end of year, you can see at twenty twenty-two, once again, we had seven point five million, and by the end of twenty thirty-three, we're down to two point six million. So, you know, the question is, how much cash should be in this fund, because that's a huge drop. And so, the very bottom section is where we look at what we think the cash needs are for the fund. And so, it includes the target minimum working capital, the working capital for the debt payments, and then, the reserve for capital purchases. So the target minimum working capital, we're basically taking four months of expenses for operating, so that includes the personnel, supplies, contractual services, the transfers and the debt. So that's four months of expenses. And then, the debt payment is the principal payment due for the following year, to make sure that we have that cash available. And then, the target for the capital purchases, especially in this fund with a huge water tower, you know, the idea is to build it up and down as needed over time. So if you look at that line, you can see it is pretty high for a while, over five million, because that water tower in the plan. But then, towards the end, because at this point, we're not aware of any other huge expenses, we can kind of bring that down, which brings the cash that we need on hand now. And I know that was a lot, and I went fast in the interest of time.
But there's also, or something bad happens, I mean, you look at, there's not a lot of cash there.
It would still cover over a year of expenses. But, yeah, it is a question about what the council is comfortable with, and how much cash the council has on hand.
Four months is pretty tip.
Yeah, we build on a, you know, on a monthly basis, so we're no more than usually two months behind, you know, so that's where four months is, is the, um, component that I think the city in twenty seventeen had a utility study that was done on the wa- wa- waste and, water and wastewater. And they were probably about a six months, I believe, four is plenty, as long as you're pulling in your debt payment, which is first, which, again... So, where you could get into trouble is if there's, happens to be a big, huge capital need component to it. So, I mean, again, it's kind of a, a comfort level, but from an industry standard, even after the ten years, we're still in a very good financial position. You're in a very good position, always a risk at any time you're, you're looking at that. But, a point that I want to bring back that, uh, up is that we're sitting at seven point five million dollars. There's another good indication that today, we are in very good financial shape. What we've done with the plan is that we're not just raising our rates, just to raise rates, we're raising rates and low, and buying down our cash balances, to be able to cover our, our needs. And again, it's the city council to make that determination that what's in the capital improvement plan is truly a need for the city. But, um, Mary Kay's done an excellent job and, and laid it out very, very well, and all of the financial statements are laid out in the same manner. Some don't have as much information, um, because, you know, our fund, it's full revenue, there's expenditures and so forth. They're all laid out the same, consistent manners, um, be consistent with the assumptions. Yeah, so I, I, you know, to me, um, looking at where we're at in the budget process, I think the city council did a very good job of, of listening to the, the needs, especially with the streets and the facilities and, and the parks, and, and it puts some levy towards that, and hopefully, we'll continue to do that into the future. Um, and then, these plans, um, can work. The next component to it is the capital. So is there any other questions with this, and just for time limits, since we're, we're closing in? It, it, it's really, um... And seriously, and I mean this with all honesty, um, Mary Kay is one heck of a great addition for this city. Makes my life...
Thank you, Mary.
Makes my life so much easier.
Yeah, I've got a...
Sure.
...a clarifying question.
Sure.
The new water tower, the new water tower at Tower Park, is that being funded off of what we have now and we're spending down for it, or are we going to have to put it in a levy moving forward, or do, do some bond, or do something to pay for the water tower?
Combination of rate increases and cash lowering our, where our cash balances from that seven point... Right now, the plan would not be to issue debt for it. And again, if you remember, our debt for our, yeah, is, is pretty high. Um, and so, we're trying to avoid that, um, we can't avoid it completely, that's why we just have those three years right now that's, that's in there, so we can start to build that cash up there from that two percent, because streets really going to be the biggest driver. Um, and streets, when, every time you do a street project, you're hitting water, wastewater, service water, um, those ones in addition. So, um, we've developed, I, I think, a very, a very solid plan. Again, um, there's going to be a future discussion, you know, on the PCI, and, you know, the road index, um, you know, and, and the cost could end up being higher, but it's a com- combination.
Because my only question is, just taking a look at top line revenues, um, the city's looking to increase revenues by fifty-eight percent over ten years. So that's, if you have, it's quick math, if you have a hundred dollar water bill, you're, in ten years, your water bill's going to be a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's why I asked the question, where the, where the funding for the water is.
And again, if you go out, if you go out and bond... And again, if you go out and bond something, again, you know, that, you know, at that million dollars over twenty years, you've just paid one point six million dollars. So where do you get that additional six hundred thousand? It would be, you know, raising, um, the rates up to achieve it, that's where you want to be more in a cash basis component to it. And kind of the interesting thing in that twenty seventeen study for the water and the wastewater, had for like twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, eight point five percent increases across the board, moving out five and a half, six and a half, and all the way out to the thing. So what we've got here isn't something that's totally brand new of a concept. Um, it's just kind of when your expenditures, just your operating expenditures continuously going up. Um, you know, I think it was included in our wastewater, um, the wastewater one. Um, we just, we just got, or one of the things, I think that council, it was going up like thirteen percent. Um, well, that's one of the biggest components that, of our expenditures. But, um, for sake, because we only have a few minutes, it's really to find out from city council how we want to go about going through the CIP. Um, in the budgets themselves, um, each one of the department has kind of addressed what they had in their CIP that wasn't in great detail. Um, obviously, we can go through absolutely every detail in there, we could spend eight, ten, twelve hours going through that. Um, with that, we've got one more meeting in October, we have one meeting in November, and we're moving into approval of the budget. If we want to go into great detail and have departments here, department heads here to answer questions regarding that, um, it may be wise to hire a special or have a special meeting, um, just devoted to the CIP. In addition to that, we still have enterprise funds, internal services, special revenue funds and fees. Um, so I honestly believe, my recommendation is I believe CIP is of huge importance. Um, and I believe that we should, um, do it justice and have a special, um, and devote towards that and have our department heads here to answer any questions. That's my recommendation.
I agree. Especially when we have two things going in one night, you don't get enough time.
So, um, Jenny will look at scheduling something up for that. Um, it's six twenty-eight, can you believe that? I made some, we finished something up at hundred, that's what it was. That's pretty hard to believe. Orin, did you, did you hear that? We wrapped it up that quick. Yeah, but I thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to send emails, um, and then we can address them at the next city council meeting. Um, but really have tried to give you that big picture. Again, um, you have the most important component, you have to make these tough decisions. Um, and then I want to leave you with just one final piece. Uh, there was an organization that had asked, um, for some information, and then if you wanted, they would send you the results. And they asked some questions.
I'm going.
They asked questions of, uh, of what the twenty twenty-four cost of living percentage was for cities, um, and then also what the property tax increased. And if you sent in your information and you wanted, they would give you the results of their survey. So here's the results of the survey. I guess at the end of the day, when I really look at it, us sitting at eight point five isn't out of line. Um, I know it's a tough, it's tough, but what I'm saying is that we're not the only ones who are faced with, um, you know, needs. Um, but I thought I would share that information with you, um, so you could have some.
Thank you. Really glad it was helpful.
Right, and there were some.
Rogers.
There's a twenty-four, twenty-four point four.
Thirty-three point six.
I'm moving.
You know, usually when you see that huge increase like that, it's usually because they've got some big bonding issues. And that's what we're trying to avoid with the plan, is keep our debt at least level to where we're at, um, and move forward from there.
That's very important stuff, thank you. We appreciate the information. All right. Well, thanks, guys, call the workshop, if you want to.
So move your honor.
So move, help remember Cole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
So do we sit here?
Yep, we can't go anywhere because of the time. Pull up the chair. That's why we're.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I was going to make it right.